I would raise that we didn't really talk about the requirement for municipal licensing, so a decrease of revenue of $5,000. So if that's the revenue that we generate now, it seems like there are a lot of responsible pet owners who come in and get the license. I don't know what that means when you come to the town office and just sign up and pay your licensing fee and that's all it is. And so if it doesn't, you don't feel it has an impact, then I understand the issue around staffing and time to do all of that. The recommendation is to not license.
Correct, correct. It does take time on administrations, on our staffing to do that. And so our thought is to do it on the back end. As you said, most people that are responsible pet owners do that type of thing anyway. And the individuals that don't, if their animals are loose and we capture them, then there are going to be some pretty hefty fines for not having identification for those animals, so.
Okay, and then speaking of identification, so if chickens get loose, do they have to be identified too, or are we?
Yes, there's a licensing process that anybody that has hens has to go through.
Right, and they include pictures and all that sort of stuff, right?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you. So if we have nothing further, somebody want to make a motion?
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate your support. I'll make the motion that council approves first reading of the Responsible Pet Ownership Bylaw 2023-03-P, as defined in the report AIR-24-067.
All right, motion's been made. Is there any questions, comments, or debate on the motion?
Just a comment. I think this is one step in the right direction. You know, we are talking about food security and homegrown food. So I think, again, you know, it's a step towards the right direction, but we'll see how it pans out when we have it on the ground.
Are you proposing llamas or something?
You know, maybe the next step.
Okay, motions on the floor, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Next up, we have the Brazu Recreation Board Bylaw, and I believe this is Mr. Van Claveren.
Good morning, and through the chair to the rest of council. So we talk about the Joint Rec Board Bylaw 2024-01-C. We did so as well in the previous council meeting where this was presented in the report to reestablish the Joint Rec Board with Brazil County and Drayton Valley, as we are coming together again and have this advisory board that we had in the past reestablished. The first reading was done by our council on February 7th, and there were amendments made, and those amendments are reflected as well in the current bylaw that you see attached to the agenda package. We know, of course, that council of Brazil has to pass this bylaw as well, and they went to their second reading last time and was at that moment defeated. So at the council meeting of Brazil recently, yesterday, they went through this process again, and they started off with their first reading, went to second reading as well, and could not because of the three readings in one meeting go to their third reading. Because they did not have unanimous consent, and that means that they will do their third reading later on in their next regular meeting. So what you see, of course, is a report in front of you with that amended bylaw attached to it already. One of the items that was in there as well changed is that the appointment of an alternate was incorporated in that as well. So based on the conversations with what happened in Brazil County beforehand, we incorporate that as well in this bylaw that's in front of you, that an alternate may be appointed. There's two counselors appointed from both councils, but there may be one appointed as an alternate as well to make sure that there's enough representation possible to the boards. So with that, there's basically in front of you the recommendation from us to first off, take second reading of the current bylaw that's part of the package. That bylaw has been established beforehand. And then their third reading, which is possible to do in this meeting as well, has an amendment made based on yesterday's meeting that council of Brazil had. So I can explain, of course, what that little change is in there as well. That change does not seem to be holding up Brazil's passing of the bylaw in three or four weeks when they have their next regular meeting. But of course, it gives the opportunity for this council to say, "We can do second reading here as well, based on the bylaw in this report, and postpone and do later the third reading, or do both readings at this meeting here as well, and then we are done for our bylaw change." So I will explain what that difference is between the bylaw that's part of the package and the one that's handed out here at the table as well for potentially third reading. So the recommendation is that we take a second reading with the bylaw as presented, which then will sound as that council gives second reading to bylaw 2024-01-C, as defined in report AIR2469. Any questions?
Do you have any questions from anybody? Go ahead, Emila.
Thank you. I guess there was a little bit of confusion about committee at large appointments. Has that been sorted out?
Thank you for that question, and through the chair to Councilman Mena. So yes, that has been sorted out. So both first and second reading that Brazil County did as well includes that member at large. So it's part of their bylaw as well. So it coincides with what we decided here already to keep that in there. So this bylaw that's in front of you has that still in there, so that's, yes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add? Motion. Go ahead, Tom.
Mr. Mayor, that I make a motion that council give second reading to bylaw 2024-01-C, as defined in report AIR24069. If I have that correct, and I was trying to catch up to where you were going, but the numbers remain the same, right? The one I have given first reading to is in our regular package.
That is correct.
Right.
Perfect. Any questions, comments, or debate on the motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried.
And further, Deputy Mayor?
Clark? Yes, call him, whatever.
Call him, correct. The council gives third reading to bylaw 2024-01-C, as defined in report AIR24069.
The motion's been made. Go ahead, Mr. Van Claveren.
Thank you, Chair, and basically through council, to council. So when we take this third reading, it's the bylaw in front of you as a handout that you got earlier. So it's with amendments, because the one item that's added in there is section number 13. And section number 13 was brought up by Brazil Council in their discussions, which they, as an amendment in their second reading, took, and they passed that yesterday. Section number 13 in there, as you can see, reads that "The audio recording will also be taken at every board meeting." So there's a minute taker, of course. That's the designated minute taker secretary. Does that, of course, on paper, but also a recording audio. We did that in our last meeting as well, a little while ago. And Brazil County wanted to have that in the bylaw attached, so that number 13 is added in. That means that all the numbers shift over one after that. So with that amendment, that's the one that you have in front of you that's marked "Third R," "Third Reading." And that means that the motion, in that case, then will sound as Counselor McGee did, with "comma," with amendments.
Wait, so we're gonna add "with amendments" to?
That's a friendly answer from me, but I cannot make that, but yes.
Can somebody make that friendly amendment?
I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, your recommendation was administration just to wait for the final reading from county and then bring this back? Or you would like us to pass this today?
So thank you for that question and the clarification. So I brought up the two options, but it is our recommendation to do it now. We don't expect any changes or items with Brazil passing their bylaws. So the recommendation is basically do it as we are now doing it for third reading as well, to pass it, and not to have to wait. But it was an option that council could have taken, but the recommendation from administration is to pass this third reading as well.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I would like to make the friendly amendments.
Perfect, okay. So we have to, we have to vote on the amendment rate? Yeah, so a friendly amendment has been made, all in favor? That is carried. Oh, yeah, you need to accept it. Accept it. All the rules, yeah, yeah. All right, so amendment has been made, all in favor? Thank you. And we will get back to the motion made by Counselor Tom. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have the Youth Advisory Committee member appointment, and I believe that's Lola Strand.
Good morning. So according to the terms of reference for the Youth Advisory Committee, composition includes two youth representatives from each school division, Wildrose School Division and St. Thomas Aquinas Catholic School Division, and also seven community youth representatives from the community between the ages of 14 and under 25 at the time of appointment or renewal, reflecting the diversity of youth in the community. So that makes a total of nine voting Youth Advisory Committee members in total. Committee members Tarek Jabbar and Claire Williams have both submitted their resignations from the committee, leaving two community at large positions vacant. The positions were advertised, and a total of one new application was received for appointment. We did receive an application from Ms. Kenzia Dodds. She is currently enrolled in St. Thomas Aquinas School Division and would prefer a one-year term. She's excited to help to encourage youth to have a voice in things that affect them in the community, and she would prefer a one-year term. So what administration would recommend is that she finish out one of the vacant positions, so her term would end October 31st, 2024. And of course, she would have the opportunity then to apply again at that point. So administration recommends appointing Ms. Kenzia Dodds for a one-year term ending October 31st of 2024.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions from the council members? Go ahead, Counselor Evans. I'm ready for a motion. Okay?
No questions, just a motion. I'll make the motion that council appoint Kenza Dodds to the Town of Drayton Valley Youth Advisory Committee for the term as recommended by administration, as defined in report AIR24-070.
All right, the motion's been made. Is there any questions, comments, or debate on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? That is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lola. So now we're moving on to Drayton Valley Community Foundation Letter of Support, and this is... Ons?
Thank you, Chair, and yeah, this item is in front of you because of the U20 curling.
What, too early? You bet, U20 curling.
Okay, thank you. I heard you say "letter of support," and I was like, whoa. Okay, so the U20 Curling Provincial's donation request. The Drayton Valley Curling Club hosted their U20 Provincial Championships, and it's starting today on the 6th of March until the 10th. And the organization came on February 21st in front of council as a delegation, explaining their event, the way that they got it awarded in a late stage of the game to host these provincials, and that they're working hard at that moment to organize it and making sure that it's a great event. And I'm sure it will be. Of course, the financial portion was part of, let's say, their quest to come to council and to do that, of course, through sponsors and all other means to make their budget meet their ends. Brazil County, and the question was, of course, made to discuss with Brazil and in the rec board, what the recommendation could it be for financial support to this event. Brazil County awarded $1,000. That goes directly through their Director of Community Services, that has the opportunity in Brazil County to do $1,000 per event per year, and that doesn't go through council. So that was awarded at that moment, and they are not seeking or getting any other additional monies from Brazil County. The Joint Rec Board discussed this and basically said, "Bring this back to the council here in Drayton Valley," with a recommendation and options, of course, for them to choose as well. So in this case, it's important, of course, to remember that Brazil is a cost-sharing partner in our recreation facility. So it was clear in these conversations that waiving of the fees would not be an option to go to. So the options are A, B, and C in the report, as you can see. So council could award the same amount that Brazil County does, $1,000, and take that out of the community grant funds. Of course, we know all, last time already in the presentation, that they were late in the game, so that couldn't be part of the official process that we do. But council could award that $1,000 and will take that from the community grant and will present that in quarter two, reporting that will come later on. That means, of course, that the current dollar amount will be diminished already by $1,000, so just under $12,000 left over for that report and the remainder of the year. Option B would, of course, be that council decides to amount, to take another amount to be awarded to them. In the presentation, they said like they were looking at the rental fees, for instance, the support. We know that's about $5,000. So that was what the committee did. Presented basically here as a delegation. Council has, of course, the liberty to take another amount, and $1,000, anything, and take that out of the community grant as well, which then depletes, of course, that amount even more, if it's a higher amount. Option C would be to tell the organization, "Submit your process as regular. Yes, your event happened already, but wait till Q2 comes in front of council," and not saying a dollar amount at the moment, but just being part of the whole process. And in the conversations that I had with the organization, they are very happy that council is at least considering financial support in either way that will come. They are happy to say that they are making good strides with their financials, so sponsors are coming on board. They, of course, need their revenue coming in from ticket sales, so they don't have an end budget that they can say, "This is exactly what we're doing." It's just, at this moment, of course, hoping that they get enough funds in. But any support from this council would be appreciated, and they already made that clear in the sense that they will thank council already, right now, ahead of time. So in front of you is basically that recommendation that the rec board together also set to council to take the same amount that Brazil County did, to have $1,000 awarded from the community grant program. And that council, and that, sorry, admin, of course, then will that bring back during Q2 with the $1,000 already handed out. So that means that the recommendation is that council donate the Drayton Valley Curling Club $1,000 for the U20 Provincial Championships, paid from the community events grant budget, as defined in report AIR2468. There's any questions?
Perfect, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Van Claveren? Go ahead, Counselor McGee.
I'm all for this recommendation. What comes to my mind, though, is that if, because we were asked by a separate community who had taken on the opportunity and then it was given to us, it's quickly on them. If they come up with a shortfall, I assume they're able to come back to us and say, "You know, it went really well, but we have a shortfall. Can you see a way clear to help us with that?" That would come under, I don't know if we have the provisions under our grant applications, but it just occurs to me.
And through the chair, thanks, Counselor McGee, for that suggestion. So yes, of course, we have seen in the past that certain events that we know are happening have their application finalized in a community grant afterwards. So yes, that could be a conversation with them, that we can suggest that option. So in that case, we would bring that, of course, during the Q3, or Q2 even, community grant opportunity. If that's the case, we can have that conversation, and they might opt for that.
All right, then, if there's no more questions?
Doesn't look like it.
I will make a motion to council to donate the Drayton Valley Curling Club $1,000 for the U20 Zero Provincial Championships, paid from the community events grant budget, as defined in report AIR24068.
Okay, the motion's been made. Is there any questions, comment, or debate on the motion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. So now we can move on to Drayton Valley Community Foundation Letter of Support. And Kundi?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I will just be presenting on the Drayton Valley Community Foundation Letter of Support. So as council, it's probably already aware, the shortage of rural medical professionals is a trend that has been kind of felt all throughout Alberta, with Drayton Valley not being the exception. So the Drayton Valley Community Foundation, in partnership with SOS Media, would like to continue their efforts through our Travel Alberta Rural Development and Promotion Fund to be utilized towards a targeted marketing campaign to entice physicians and other medical professionals to relocate to Drayton Valley and Brazil. The Rural Development and Promotion Fund has an investment range of up to $100,000 for the purpose of supporting tourism organizations in destination development and promotion initiatives, and ask the town to provide a lot of support with their grant application. As it stands, there are no perceived financial implications, no legal or risk implementations, no organizational implementations, and as well, no service levels implications. For the next steps, we would just provide a lot of support to them and then just wait for news about the outcome of the application. That being said, it is our recommendation that council accept the proposal to provide the Drayton Valley Community Foundation with a lot of support, as defined in report AIR24-073. Thank you.
Thanks, Kundi. Do we have any questions or comments from anybody on council? Okay, I do have one question. So this is gonna be DVCF, and I'm assuming SOS and the Drayton Valley Hospitality and Tourism Association, they're still all associated with this, correct? So is it that entire group that's looking for it, or is it just the Community Foundation that's looking for them?
So, through to the chair, so the Community Foundation will be taking the lead in the application. So they're the ones that raised their hand to submit everything to Travel Alberta. But as before, with the campaign that we did, I think, two years ago, they would still have a partnership with SOS Media to do the content creation and development for their website. And for the Drayton Valley and Hospitality and Tourism Authority, they are more or less just supporting the initiative and seeing what they can do in that capacity.
And do we know if this grant is contingent on any matching funds, or is it just no match required?
Through to the chair, so we do know that there is matching funds for this grant. And being that the case, I do know in our previous council meeting, February 7th, that there was a motion made for a letter of commitment of funds, which was denied. And so in the Community Foundation, going forward with this application, it's with the understanding that the town would not be providing any of those matching funds.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have. Anybody else? Can I get somebody, go ahead.
Just to clarify your last question, Deputy Mayor Clark. So we've denied the Community Foundation, or have we said we are in the process of looking and a grant to not only work with the Free Press, but also SOS? Are we there, or did we deny Community Foundation and waiting for the grant for the Free Press?
Through the chair to Counselor McGee. So I think dating back to last year's budget meetings, we did deny the Drayton Valley Free Press and SOS Media, both campaigns were denied. And in February of this year, when they came back to us and basically asked for a letter of commitment of funds, I think that as for $50,000, we denied that. But then with this grant, it's our way of trying to support them in getting those funds through this grant.
Okay, Kundi, that's the clarification I needed. Thank you. I don't have the motion in front of me, so...
Go ahead, I've got a question.
So we're giving them a letter of support to apply for this grant, but we are responsible for matching funds, or did I misunderstand that?
So we will be providing a lot of support only.
Okay.
And there'll be no matching funds.
Okay.
I could just add to that, Deputy Mayor. I suspect that you'll see a budget pressure in 2025, because this is a result of a new intake, right, for that grant. So the intake just opened, so it goes for assuming a calendar year. So I suspect that that budget ask will be there again when we start to look at 2025 budget.
Okay. Somebody want to go ahead and make a motion?
I would. I don't have the paper in front of me.
I don't either.
Can I get the paper, Kundi?
Yeah, I think Kundi has it there.
While I make the motion, I just wanted to clarify a little bit. You know, I don't think we, per se, denied both of those asks. We were just saying that with the budget restraints that we had, it was hard to allocate funds at that time. But we will work with them to get grant funding, and that's what we are doing now. So I'm delighted to make this motion that council accept the proposal to provide Drayton Valley Community Foundation with a letter of support, as defined in report AIR24-073. Thank you.
Perfect. We have a motion on the floor. Any comments, questions, or debate on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? That is carried. I'm thinking we should probably hop through 9.8 and the rest here before we get into closed. So I think Kundi, you're on for this seat, or who's on for that one? So I think Kundi, you're on for this seat, or who's on for that one? Yep, you want to take, yeah, go ahead for nine point eight. So, is this closed? Oh, it is closed. Sorry. Yeah, it's closed. You want to take a quick five minute break? It's ten o'clock, sure, everybody's had enough coffee. We'll take five minute break here. That wasn't five minutes, I think that was ten minutes, but that's okay. We're going to bump actually over to council initiatives. Counselor McGee wanted to talk about the library board. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Clark. The, the library board is going to be short a member in, at the end of the calendar year. They won't be returning. We'll be short one in the summer, and we're short one now. So we're having this, a little bit of a struggle. We can, we can accept as many as ten members, so, and the town is, is responsible for advertising for, for, for members. And so, I, I think at this point in time, if we put out just an advertising for library board members, and then, once we receive those, then it would do the normal protocol. And if, if we were able to, we may accept even three to, to make up for, because we can have ten maximum, or five, five is the minimum. So we just need to, I don't know who, who does that in the organization. Okay. And so that's, that's that. And I don't think we need a formal motion for that. Do, do you think we need a formal motion?
I think it's a good idea to have one, yes, sir.
Okay, then I, I would make that in, in the form of a motion that we send out some advertising for library board members, and not put a number on it, just see what, what, what transpires. And then, once we see that, anyway, that's the motion.
Okay, that's the motion. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have any comments, questions, or debate on the motion?
I'm, yeah, I'm all for getting the information out there, but just wondering, what, do we have, have a kind of a framework? We know which, which committees, which organizations do we do that kind of a advertising or information sharing with the town in future? If, if we get more requests from other organizations, are we gonna entertain that as well, right? So we're just wondering if, if we have a framework on what we usually do.
Through Deputy Mayor Clark to Counselor Gamanna. Counselor McGee is correct in that the town is responsible for advertising. There's a special relationship between library boards and municipalities that perhaps other organizations don't have. So my understanding of the process is that we put the request out for board members, they apply, and council then decides who to go on that board. Now, I haven't read the exact bylaw as it relates to the town of Drayton Valley, but that's the normal process. So for other boards, community-based boards, if they have an agreement or a defined relationship with the town, then it would be in there. But for the library, that is our responsibility.
Okay, you know, that's great. Like, like I said, I have no problem with that, but just wondering if that's the case, I don't know if the other organizations like, you know, the ones that we sit knows that we are willing to do that, right? So that may be a communication piece that we need to send out to the other boards that's saying that, okay, you know, if you have issues with volunteers or recruiting board members, we can help you to communicate that to the community. Because I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that there's lots of organizations having the issue of recruiting board members right now.
Through the chair to Counselor Gamanna, thank you for the question. I'll have to review some of the information, but my understanding would be, as our C A O has mentioned, if it's a board that we are associated with, affiliated with, we, we, we do do that. But if it's an outside organization, it would be up to that organization to manage their volunteer base, their call for committee members, et cetera. Does that answer your question?
No, definitely. I was just, like I said, I have no problem doing this, but just wanted to know that if, if we could, you know, extend our hand to other organizations that we work with, like the Health Foundation, or the, what other organizations that we sit on, right? So those foundations and those organizations having a hard time recruiting as well, and it is, I guess we have a good platform as the town for, to push that information to the community than some of those individual organizations have. That, that's where, you know, my question comes from. Thank you.
And if I might, the, every year, I think we're just at a loss now, because we're going to be short members, so it's right in the middle of the year. But normally, the Brazu Foundation, all those ones where we set up on our, our, in our meeting dates, that we advertise for all of those that we sit on, generally, I think, and then distribute as we, as we like. And we also, I understand, which is something that we may want to consider, is that we're responsible for suggesting who, who goes on those boards, which I'm not sure, not sure about that, to be honest with you. But, but it's, it's a good point that you raise, Counselor Gamanna, and I think we should, yeah, we should talk more about it. At this point, we're just going to be short members, and so we need some members.
Yeah, I, I would agree, I think, Tom. I think, you know, we are affiliated with, with certain committees and organizations in the town, and those that we, I guess, aren't, you know, don't, don't sit on and aren't associated with that way. I think, you know, to what end do we, do we advertise for others, I guess, is the question I have. So anyway, we'll, we'll leave it at that, but the, the motion is on the floor to proceed. Any questions, comments, or debate? All in favor? That is carried. All righty, now we can get into department reports. I think first up, we have Mr. Van Claveren.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and through the rest of council. So Department Report for the Community and Recreation Services Department. First of all, we are back, and that means E C D C is back in the building. They moved over in the weekend, so that meant that Friday, the kids were still at C E T C, and on Monday, February twenty sixth, they were back into their building. So the staff worked hard to get them over with their contractors to finalize all the other needed items in the weekend, and it's great to see the kids back in there. Some recognize exactly what little detailed changes are there, and others think it's a brand-new building again. So, awesome to be there. The Snow Angels program is still ongoing, and we talk always about volunteers, but it's nice to see Opportunity Home helping as well, so they're on board and provide that service, and we are looking forward to maybe even, let's say, utilize them as well for other volunteer opportunities that we have in our community. One of the other things, the tax season, it started, we said it already a couple of times, but March first, everybody be aware, and the first applications are coming in, or we send them to our partner that's helping us out, it's G M Accounting and Tax Services. In the Omniplex, I attended the Lions Club Convention just for a brief moment, listening into one of their national reps, and it's clear that also they are looking into sustainability, and sustainability for a big organization worldwide like that means members. So they are really looking forward to get their programs in, to get more memberships all over the world to be sustainable. But it's great to have the event over there, and it worked out very well. There were a lot of other events happening in that weekend. We know how they went, they were awesome, like, for instance, the figure skating event, the showcase event, and the curling that we had from the high school happening there. We are hosting a lot of other big events, so keep an eye on that. In the pool, we had the one event that we were looking forward already for years, it's hosting our own T L C competition. So last Saturday, March second, we had that, over a hundred and fifty participants from all over the province, and we came in first. So we know we are a good club with a lot of members, and that means for those T L C competitions, if you have a lot of kids enrolled in your program and go to competitions, there's a good chance that you will come out ahead of the pack. Community Services, we have had seen a cold snap again, it's just warming up, and it's going to be, let's say, pretty nice again from here on. But the shelter pods are busy, sometimes we even have to send people away, in that sense that they don't fit in there. That's a combination of certain pods might be technically just out of order for one day or something like that, as one of the doors doesn't work out at that moment, but we see that uptake. So we are at that edge most of the time of being full as capacity over there. And the other items in the facilities, we're working out the plans that we have, the projects that we are awarded. So some of the items are, of course, with other departments as well, like the camera system or the facility branding. Those kind of things are underway, and our maintenance crew is working their way through those projects as well, on top of the regular maintenance. There's any questions?
Hans, the, the E C D C would, we would have had to do extensive renovations over a period of time, that would have been all through insurance?
Thank you for that question, and through the chair, McGee. Yes, so it was a very good cooperation with our insurance, so everything like that basically is covered. So we know that something like that, hopefully doesn't happen too much, but we were working very good, and this water damage was basically a hundred percent covered by our insurance and, and working well with them. So, yeah, we're back, and it looks like we've never been away.
Good. Shelter pods are full, can, can you remind me of, if I'm, if I'm unhoused, and if I'm banned from the shelter pods, and I'm banned from Warming Hearts, I don't have very many options. And so I'm going to tie it into the question about Warming Hearts. What's their, their time like? Like, so is there a time when it's minus thirty that there's no place to go other than the library? In, in, do you know about that? I thought Warming Hearts went right till about seven, and then the pods opened at seven, and so you just made, made that nice little exchange, but I, I don't have the answer to that.
And thank you for that question again, and through the chair. So, yes, they are going back-to-back in cold snaps, so they, I mean, the shelter pods and Warming Hearts. Sometimes it does happen that Warming Hearts has a, even if they have volunteer issues and, and keeping the doors open. So we've seen in the last couple of days that they were not able to really go back-to-back a couple evenings, so we did have a gap, let's say, between around three or five-ish until the shelter pods open at six thirty, seven o'clock. At that moment, indeed, there is no real opportunity for unsheltered people to go inside warm, other than the library or other public locations, like, let's say, a store, a mall, something like that. So we do that, that's, sometimes there is still that transition gap in there, and we are still looking at other options, creative ideas, but sometimes it does happen in a day. We also know that when those options are not there, we have good rapport, and especially our volunteers from the Warming Heart Center, they even know where people hunker down, excuse me, where they go, certain locations that they are together, because sometimes they don't come even to the Warming Heart Center, and then it's like, hey, where are they? And they, let's say, find places with each other somewhere else. So we know most of the times where they are through our volunteer organization.
Okay, and I think, I just, yeah, the gap is the only piece for me, as it starts to warm again, it'll be what it's, what it's going to be, but that's what I wanted to ask about. The other piece was, you and I had quickly talked about the Snow Angels and the Opportunity Homes coming on board, and we also understand that some kids need credits for volunteering in our community, and you and I had a brief conversation about that. I, I hope that we're able to connect those dots as well.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that again. Yes, we are looking into opportunities for volunteers, that includes, for instance, high school students that look for hours and credits, to see where other opportunities for volunteer programs are besides what we already have.
Any other questions from any other counselors? Nope. A couple things, Hans, the E C D C, I think, I just wanted to just do a little bit of a shout-out for the crew there. They, they worked over the weekends to get everything moved over from the C E T C back to the E C D C and get everything back up running. And of course, I mean, when, when that all happened, there, there was a lot of, a lot of work that went into getting the special licensing and all that sort of stuff. So just wanted to say thank you for everybody there for the hard work. I think, you know, certainly doesn't go unnoticed. I know there was a lot that happened behind the scenes, but certainly it is noticed. Another thing that I had, I had a couple conversations on the weekend with, with a couple folks. One of them takes their kid every day of the week to a, to a hockey academy in Edmonton. They also coach there. And I mentioned to them, hey, you know, is there an opportunity in Drayton Valley for something like that associated with the schools? And they said, probably, you know, there, there seems to be, I mean, there's a lot of kids that play hockey here, of course. And I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm thinking about this from a utilization perspective at the Omniplex, if we can kind of get those off-peak times full during the week at, at certain points, I think that would be certainly helpful. So I don't know if that's something maybe we take to the, to the rec board or, or what, but anyway, that's, that's a conversation I had with a couple people over the weekend.
And thank you, Counselor Clark and Deputy Clark. So other communities are, let's say, that have already, are their JUPA's in place, they utilize that a lot of times as well. So when schools have a academic program, or kids that are in high school and utilize, let's say, a portion of their day for, for instance, hockey camp, under the JUPA, under the joint use of facilities with the schools and the municipality, it's sometimes possible to have that in those downtimes during the day. So when we are talking with the school division about that, and because they have to get it ready for 2025, it's one of those options that they could maybe bring in and, and utilize our facilities for those kind of activities. So thank you for sharing that, and we'll, let's say, put it on the side of the agenda at that moment as well.
Sounds good. So there's nothing further for Mr. Van Claveren? We'll move along to Protective Services. Chief Tom Thompson.
So in regards to Protective Services, it's been extremely busy the last little while. On February twenty first and twenty third, we did our industrial orientation for wildland firefighting. They were very well received. We did one in Breton and one in Drayton Valley. We had approximately a hundred and sixty individuals attend the sessions with representing approximately thirty-two local companies in the area. They were introduced to a whole number of different things related to emergency management and wildland firefighting, such as the Incident Command System, emergency operation processes of checking into staging area, how to fill out forms, how to submit invoices, as well as some safety things like aerial operations, as well as things as simple as what types of connections are needed for water haulers to connect to fire engines. So it was a very successful event, we got a lot of positive feedback from that, and from that, we are hoping to generate lists of companies that will be able to work with us if we have a, a large-scale incident. As well, we are currently in the process of doing several public engagements for residents on fire smarting. We have six scheduled events, one of them went yesterday, and we have another one scheduled events. One of them went yesterday, and we have another one on Thursday, and then they follow in consecutive weeks after. The, the topics will primarily focus on fire smarting your residents as well. We also talk a little bit about fire behavior and what happens during a fire and all the processes that go on as a result of a fire. We also talk about home assessment and mitigation and evacuation and emergency preparedness. So those are all happening as we, as we are here today. Another part that we are working on is the fire service has put together a series of short videos for the public. And I believe they've been, some of them have been posted already because people have been telling me that they've seen them. I haven't seen them yet, but they've been commenting on them, which is positive. A lot of those videos are again related to fire smarting as well as what to pack for an evacuation and just clarifying some of the terminology in regards to wildland firefighting, such as if a fire is out of control, what does that mean? So those will be posted in the next couple of weeks as we prepare for wildland season, wildland fire season. On top of that, our municipal staff have also been very busy getting ready for wildland fire season. They have been involved in ICS 100 training. And I'm happy to note that 86 staff members have already completed the online ICS 100 course. We are, we are also doing in-person sessions for ICS 200, which is going at the end of this week, as well as ICS 300, which will be next week. So our staff is fully committed and involved in that process. As well, on March 7th, at nine o'clock, Town Council will be doing the ICS 402 Incident Command Training for Executives as part of your preparedness for the upcoming wildland fire season. The course will outline the roles and responsibilities of council during a large scale incident, as well as provide council with a bit of a framework around the ICS system and how council fits into that system. So we will see you all at that course that's coming up. In some other happenings, as council is aware, our bylaw officer right now, Alec Johnson, is currently going, has gone off to do his schooling to become a CPO officer. So he will be gone for the next six weeks, doing, doing, doing that training. And then once he comes back, we, we've already submitted his application to the Solgen for his appointment. So as soon as he gets back, we're hoping that the, the changeover of him going or becoming a CPO officer will be, will be quick and then we can get him up and, up and running. As well, the fire department has been busy with the, with the hiring of staff. We are in the process right now of hiring a training officer. The hire, the hiring committee is shortlisted and we are starting interviews for that position. So we're hoping to fill that position shortly. And lastly, some good news that I shared with our CAO late last week, the Drayton Valley Community Foundation had, came to us several months ago, asking, asking us what, what equipment would be needed for a wildland fire operation. They had been receiving donations from different companies to put towards firefighting equipment. And I'm happy to announce today that they are making a donation of approximately $150,000 to purchase a wildland fire sprinkler unit for us. So we are extremely excited and extremely happy. And we have already put into action, getting all of the, the equipment we need for that trailer. So I'm very thankful that the Drayton Valley Community Foundation has stepped up and made that contribution to help us with our wildland fire season. The nice part about that, the, that drink, the sprinkler trailer is that it can be deployed here locally, but it will also be deployed elsewhere if needed in the province. So that's a really positive thing for us. So that's my report.
Thanks, Tom. That's all positive news. And I think that's, that's absolutely fantastic. We're getting 150 grand for a sprinkler system. Do we know when we get that in our hands or is it currently?
It, the, the trailer has been ordered. So we are hoping to pick it up next week, early next week. And we've already ordered all the equipment for it. So it will be, our anticipation of it to be up and running will be by the end of March. So it'll be ready to go for wildland fire seasons.
Okay. And I'm assuming there'll be photo ops and all that sort of
Absolutely.
Available for it. Perfect.
100%.
Got to celebrate that for sure. I'll open it up for some questions for Tom. Go ahead, Emilla.
Thank you. Not a question, but just a comment. I had the opportunity to attend the wildfire orientation that you mentioned at the CTC. It was very well organized. I think you guys did a fantastic job there. And I think Cole did a fantastic job opening up and explaining the situation. So kudos to all of you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Evans.
Thank you. So Tom, you feeling better about our preparation this year? You know, I, I understand that, you know, it's difficult to manage all the help that's, that's offered or just shows up when you're in the middle of an emergency. And I, I think the, the meetings and the orientations are invaluable. Do you think it's sinking in with, with, with the businesses? Do you think they understand what, what you need them to, to do to be effective in the middle of an emergency now?
Yeah, I do. As, as you correctly identified during the last, our last large scale incident, we had a lot of freelancing going on where we had people that, that had good intention that wanted to help, but ended up causing more problems for us. And, and during the, our industry training sessions, that was all explained. We had companies that, that freelanced on the incident. And as a result, we had to abort fire aerial drops because of it, because they were in the, in the drop zone. And there was a lot of confusion, people coming, looking for food, and we didn't even know they were on, on the fire scene. So hopefully with these orientation sessions, we've clarified a lot of that and reasons why people need to check in at staging, why they need to be identified in simply for safety and accountability, knowing, so that we know who is out on the fire scene. So a lot of that, I think will be, be mitigated. And I think we, now we have industry working with us as opposed to working against us during the incident. So I think it's all positive.
I agree. I, I, I think it's all positive too. And, you know, kudos to you and, and all the staff who's involved in this. I feel like we're slowly building our, our capacity and, and I'm feeling it better about us meeting our, our responsibilities and obligations should we run into another unfortunate fire this season. But fingers crossed, the snow will stick around for a little while. It won't all melt away next week and we'll have a little moisture in the spring. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Just had an opportunity, Tom, to sit down with Warehouse or Jeff McKay particularly, and talked a little bit about their preparation and the communication that would happen. And so an acronym came up and it's an acronym, it's IMT. Are you, can you tell me what that is?
Yeah, it's Incident Management Team. And so when, when the fire happened, we brought in an all-hazard incident management team from several different locations in the province. A couple of years ago, the province moved, and a lot of it came from the Fort McMurray fire and the, and the issues that went on in, in that incident. The province developed what are called incident management teams. And it's, it's people from different municipalities taking extensive training to become part of these incident management teams. So when large scale incidents happen like we had, they are able to be deployed to those, to those incidents and help, help the local municipality deal with those types of, of incidents. It's, it's no secret that when we have these large scale incidents that go on for, for days and days, the local staff get burned out and they can't, they can't continue working 24 hours a day. So you need help and you need depth on the bench. And so these IMT teams come in and they help with that process. We currently have a couple of staff members who are doing that advanced training and will become part of those IMT teams. So they can be deployed here, but also can be deployed elsewhere as well.
Yeah, because I, all I did was I put it in my notes and I thought, well, what does that mean? But so that, that's very
Yes. Just so that, you know, industry is also involved in that as well.
Right. And so that's the, the communication is ongoing with Warehouse? Because I think there's different divisions within Warehouse too. So you might be chatting with Mr. Snow or, you know, Matt or somebody differently, but somebody in the organization sits with your team for ongoing discussions?
Yeah, I have had meetings with Warehouse and I've also had meetings with Lydell Logging and just looking at their different, the different types of equipment that they have and what they can offer in terms of support, technical support as well as equipment. So we are having those conversations. As well during our industry orientation, we also had a staff member from Warehouse who is a dozer boss, Mr. Jim Kalin. He came and he did a part of a, part of the presentation to, to the industry as well. So we are fully engaged with them in the process.
Good. Thanks very much, Tom.
Wait, I just had one comment about the, the CPO and sending that application in soon. That's good. I think get a, get ahead of that. So we're not sitting here waiting. Great. So that's great. Other than that, I think, I think we're good. Thanks, Tom. Next up, we have a Municipal Service Department Report. This is Shelley Terry.
Good morning, Deputy Mayor and members of council.
Good morning.
I'll start with Public Works. We received enough snow to trigger a full town cleanup on February 25th and 26th, as outlined in our snow removal policy. Crews started snow removal at midnight on February 27th. Once the snow stopped, Priority One Snow Removal was completed on February 27th. Priority Two Snow Removal started on February 28th and was completed. Crews started snow removal on Priority Three, February 28th and will continue Priority Three until March 1st. Crews were able to start on Priority Four on March 1st as well and will continue the week of March 4th. Crews stopped snow removal over the weekend as another snow event was forecasted. On Monday, crews reassessed operations based off the snow accumulation over the weekend. Over the weekend, it did trigger our five centimeter Priority One, Two trigger points. So we did start on Priority One. We then reassessed again on the Monday to look at our full Priority One and Two. And it was determined it just wasn't enough to continue. So we moved back to Priority Four and are finishing up that now. New signage will be installed at the snow dump to help alert truck, truckers to stop and check their box, that their box is secured in the down position. This is being done as a corrective action after the last incident occurred where a truck pulled down some overhead power lines. Once snow removal activity slowed down, we'll be removing those flashing school zone lights around Eldorado to store until we can place them at the new powerhouse campus. Crews will be making some minor signage changes at Powerhouse Campus to the no parking stopping areas once the snow removal activities slow down. Our mechanics have gotten the street sweepers ready to go for street sweeping season. So those are prepped and ready. One of the new sanders is here and is currently being assembled. It's the smaller sander that we received and we should be seeing the, the bigger one come pretty quick here too. In 2022, council approved administration to sell the asphalt crack sealing unit and contract the services out as staffing requirements to run the crack sealer outweighed the benefit of the unit. And after analyzing costs, it was found that running this unit cost the town more than what it would cost to contract the service out. In 2023, we sent the crack sealer to auction and was unsuccessful selling the unit in auction in 2023. The crack sealer remained at auction for a second round and we were able to sell the unit in February 2024. Book value of the unit was $47,000 and administration was able to sell the unit for $58,000. After auction commission for selling this unit for us, we had a final sale of $55,000. This is a profit of $8,000 based off the book value of the unit. Parks has been working on snow removal since February 26th. The snow event over that weekend on the 25th and 26th created some major drifts on our walking trails. Staff focused, focused on opening up the walking trails and sidewalks by blading first to make them passable. And I've been since working on widening the trails as well as sweeping the trails to get them down to pavement as best as they can. Staff have been working on getting our herbicide pesticide license with the province. So we are ready for weed spraying season as well as getting safety and operational procedures in place. Vandalism is once again increased. Staff have been working on getting graffiti removed in many locations around town, but have struggled with the colder temperatures getting everything removed. So this will be ongoing for a little while once these temperatures warm up. Park staff have been assisting Public Works with placing signs for snow removal activities on the roadways and regular maintenance activities, including garbage shoveling out benches, crosswalks and other items are, are ongoing. Utility staff worked for three days trying to locate the isolation valve for the Eldorado School to prepare for demolition. Our mapping on the location was incorrect. Staff were able to find the valve on the east side of the school. Our mapping reflected the valve was on the west side of the school and we will be updating this in our DAS system. Water restriction policy communication is underway. Administration has drafted a letter to all high consumption users and have mailed and hand delivered these notices to all users. Communication has been working tirelessly on getting communications prepared for public release. Dedicated webpage has been developed for our website, which includes general information on drought conditions in Alberta, the details about our policy and what happens at the different stages. And we also have tips and tricks on water conservation for in your homes and around your property. The website will be launched on Thursday, March 7th. This gives enough time for the mailed letters to be received by our, by our businesses. And social media content has been developed and will be posted on the same day and linked to the webpage. The Free Pets has already ran a story about the approved policy. However, we will still be advertising our strategy through the newspaper and radio stations as well. A sewer backup occurred in the alley behind 5211 50th Street, which was attributed from grease buildup. With our utility bylaw approved, we are going to start performing more in-depth investigations. We will be sending a letter to the offending business with all of our proof that we have gathered, stating what they need to do to comply with our bylaw moving forward. And they, and if they do not comply, they could be subject to whatever the cost may be for that cleanup, which we did outline in the letter to this individual. Sager Pilot is still performing very well. Plans are being discussed for the removal of the pilot for early May and final report findings that AEP requires are also being discussed. Utilities is currently hiring an operator to fill a vacant position. An ongoing regular maintenance is being performed. Engineering and landfill, engineering has been working with Forests closely to discuss tree maintenance for danger trees under power lines and kind of building a strategy around how we're going to tackle all of those. Landfill has created a clear separation with concrete blocks to separate our blue bag recycling from our cardboard recycling. This just allows our contractors to be a little bit more efficient when they remove those from our Quonset. Administration is currently also doing an audit on curbside collection, comparing our records to the contractor's records to ensure we are being charged for the service appropriately. Administration contacted Warehouse about the trail upgrades for the FRIA grants, set up a meeting to discuss the grant requirements. Warehouse was not able to attend unfortunately. So we reached out again and are trying to arrange another meeting. And administration is currently obtaining three quotes for Leach Eight Monitoring and Reporting for the landfill. We've received two. Once we have a final quote back, we will submit prior to award, awarding this to a proponent. Meeting was held with the county about the paving work at the intersection of Springs Road 73 and 50th Ave. We discussed, we discussed their project limits and asked them to provide a quote to us to extend their project limits 10 meters west to include repairs to our crosswalk area at, at that intersection. We've received a cost estimate which can be absorbed through our operational budgets for minor road repairs. And all other project statuses are attached in the project status reports. We'll open it up for questions.
Thank you. Shelley, anybody have anything? Go ahead, Rick.
Shelley, what's, what's involved in the annual audit? Like, I'm just assuming that we have this many houses, they charge us for picking up at that many houses, whether the garbage is out or not. And you And you'll multiply that by however many months they've been working? I, I'm, I'm just curious. And then I have one other question for you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So right now, our biggest discrepancies are within trailer courts. And the reason that we have that discrepancy is because, let's say Pleasant View, Center Courts and West Ring Trailer Court, they're supplied with one water meter, not a utility bill for each separate structure, which makes it really complicated for us to manage. And so when we got the spreadsheet back from our contracted services, it was showing all units, like all actual vacant lots within a trailer court, which we were being charged for, but we were like, that, that can't be right. So that prompted us to go and kind of investigate that a little bit further. And then we had found some discrepancies with their list and our list. And we're just kind of trying to rash that out and, and figure out the best course forward, which may be us bringing an amendment to our waste bylaw to address this.
Gotcha. So, so in those locations, each, each residence gets a, gets a pickup in front of their residence or wherever?
Correct. We also found some discrepancies within units that were, like, they were saying they were picking up two to three bins from that, but our records were showing we weren't charging for two to three bins. So we had to kind of just go out in the field and confirm those discrepancies. And it's going to take us a little while, but we'll work through that.
Gotcha. Okay. I, I guess the only, this is my second question and I, and I had somebody approach me. This was several months ago, actually. But they holiday. They go down south for several months. And of course, they weren't happy that they still got charged for garbage pickup when they didn't require it, obviously. Just, I, I guess maybe just something to consider the next time we, we re-up the, the contract? Maybe, I, I don't know. Maybe there's an opportunity there for folks who, who have extended time away from their house and they know, they haven't identified, you know, a, a couple of months or whatever. Is there an opportunity for them not to be charged if they're not using the service? I understand that kind of thing can snowball into a real administrative nightmare. I don't think we necessarily have all that many folks who spend an extended stay away from their houses. But something to, to, I guess, just keep in, in your back pocket when we do renew. You know, maybe they could register the ten or twenty houses in town who are going to be away for four months or something. I don't.
Yep. Thank you for the question. So one way that we were kind of working towards to kind of better streamline the process is to create, to supply them with a town map that says this address, you pick up this many bins. And then that keeps the contractor more accountable. If they pick up more than they're supposed to, then it, it's not on us to, to flip that, that cost. We're just trying to figure out the best way forward to, and that might be something that they could call and say, like, we're going away. And then we could remove from the map and it'd be like an interactive map. So it might be something we could look into further.
Question? The, the leachate monitoring, so is that just pulling, sampling out of those, I guess, sampling wells or, or, I'm not sure what you call them, underneath the, underneath the existing piles? So they pull a sample out of there and then send it to a lab? They also check the levels?
Yes. So as per our approval, AEP kind of requires us to analyze this, I believe it's twice a year. And then in March, create this big report that has all these requirements. So these companies actually do that whole report as well as the analyzing and, and yeah, the monitoring.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. McGee. So grease buildup. We went through this two or three years ago saying we've got to put a bylaw in place that, that's, that's going to be putting some pressure on people that, that actually do that. And now, so we're, this is our first out the gate?
Correct. So yes, we did add, a few years ago, I believe, we added a clause within our bylaw that addressed grease and what we expected individuals to have, to have the grease traps with. Our problem was is we had no fine schedule or anything to really enforce it. So that was why last year we brought that forward to, to enforce. But yeah, this is one of our first go-arounds for actually doing a proper investigation, getting all the, the reports in place and then sending them what our costs kind of looked like.
And I suspect every year we send out a little, oh, by the way, don't do that.
We have not, but we are planning on doing that this year. So we, we've drafted a template letter that kind of outlines all of the requirements within the bylaw that we'll be sending to all of our commercial industrial users.
All right. Did have an opportunity earlier, if you heard, I, we met with Jeff McKay and talked about the Warehouser trails. So we, we have had some conversation, but I think it needs to go back into your department and, and work through. So it, it was a positive communication with Warehouser. That's it, Shelley. Thanks. Just a quick shout out to the staff who's been working hard. The snow removal, I, I think the town is looking as good as I've ever seen it. After a couple of snowfalls and stuff and, yeah, we've jumped on it pretty, pretty quick. I understand we're burning through our budget pretty good, but, you know, it is, it is producing results. And I, I don't think there's many people in town who can complain about the shape that our, the condition our roads are in and how quickly we jumped on the snow removal. So, yeah, good for you and your folks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. You're good? Okay. I think we're good to go on to the next thing. We can probably go into close now, I think, unless we want to accept those for information.
Yeah, there's a number of items left on the agenda, the agenda, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So that's up to you. We can break for close or we can go through the counselor, the counselor reports and information items and then have closed at the end.
Sure, let's do that. Okay, we will bump over to the council reports. First on the list, we have Counselor Tom McGee.
Thank you. The FRN and the FCSS description of services that, that was discussed, Warehouser and Jeff McKay, we've already had a discussion on. That's my report. I didn't, I wasn't able to get down to the arena or all those things that were the swimming that, thank you, Councilor Comanna, for taking on that eight fifteen job in the Saturday morning. But I, I think the, there were a ton of things going on in our community. And sometimes I, I think about you and your drone and if we could just get that drone up there. Because I think the parking lots were full for two or three days. It's amazing. Anyway, I wasn't able to do that. So look forward to your reports. Thank you.
Next, we have Counselor Rick Evans.
I, I agree with you, Tom. I, I, I think the scheduling was a little wonky on the twenty-second there. Because I ended up seeing the minister when I attended the powerhouse campus grand opening there. And that was, that was the only time I, I spent with him there. But regardless, yeah, on the twenty-second, attended the powerhouse grand opening. Extended congratulations on behalf of council and tour of the facility. And yeah, beautiful facility, very nice, impressive. So good to see that we're giving our young folks such a nice, such a nice building to get an education in. February twenty-seventh, sustainability committee meeting. Few things we talked about, members were asked to bring forward sort of their top three priorities for the committee. We, we seem to be chasing a lot of different things that we're waiting on. So I, I was hoping that we could kind of narrow our focus a little bit and push forward with a few things. You know, mine were heat recovering, other options for opportunities for reducing operating costs, increased food bank support at town events. And I've been talking to Hans about that. And then lastly, I had waste diversion. You know, I think there's lots of things that we could consider. It's finding the ones that, that kind of pay for themselves, that aren't going to cost us a lot of money. You know, styrofoam, fluorescent bulbs, you know, wood recovery, that kind of stuff. We reviewed the food recycler program, how many we have left, how many were taken, what folks thought about them. Talked about, which we're going to talk about later, but the work that was done under the municipal energy manager. If there's anything that we can look at there as a committee to assist with pushing forward. Requesting information from Bird Environment on the use of wastewater for irrigation of trees or greenhouse plants. Again, that kind of ties into our conversation, Tom, about, you know, having discussions with Warehouser, whether there's an opportunity there for us to maybe do some seedlings or maybe even incorporate our own, growing our own small trees and flowers, et cetera. Talked about how successful the Fire and Ice Festival was. Sandra Bernard gave us an update and yeah, heard nothing but good things about that. So again, kudos to everybody who had a hand in making that successful. I think it's, it's going to be a lot of fun for, for many years in the future. Yeah, and I had no interest in jumping in that ice cold bucket of water. They might have had to drag me out of there and give me a little help if I did that. Just touched on the Earth Day event and what we might be doing for that. And lastly, on February twenty-eighth, although I was a little late, I did attend the RCMP open house, which seemed to be fairly well-received. Had a lot of, a lot of comments from the public and the RCMP did a great job kind of letting everybody know where they're at and what they're up to. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Go to Counselor Comanna.
Thank you. Pretty similar things. February twenty-second, I had the opportunity to attend that Minister Turtin's visit as well and the council discussion. Also had the opportunity to go to the powerhouse campus grand opening. Counselor Evans did a fantastic job greeting, bringing greetings from the town. So thank you very much for that. On the twenty-third, wildfire preparedness orientation meeting that Chief Thompson mentioned. Once again, it was very well organized and very well attended as well. So thank you for that. February twenty-seventh, sustainability committee meeting. Our Chair, Counselor Evans, mentioned what we discussed there as well. On the twenty-eighth, had the opportunity to attend the RCMP Town Hall meeting. Once again, it was nice to hear from RCMP as well as the community of the priorities for the 2024. It was, was a good information for, for me as a counselor. March second, had the opportunity to bring the Velvishes from the town for the provincial youth lifeguard competition, was very well attended. Like you mentioned, Counselor Maggie, you know, there was no place to park or I had to park all the way down on the other side and walk. And I was, fifty-eight competitors from all around Alberta competing there. And some of them will go to the federal competitions and hopefully beyond that to the world championships. So hopefully some of Albertas will make, make that there as well. Other than that, just like Deputy Mayor mentioned, just wanted to throw a shout out to ECDC, you know, how they handled the, the event and all the hard work that they've, they've gone through for the last few weeks. So thank you for ECDC and the staff. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Couple of things I did, EPBR, they're looking at renewing their MOU with Alberta Parks. So they've set up an ad hoc committee to kind of deal with that. And my third bullet point sort of ties in with that, looking at the three-year grant application with the Minister of Parks. So they're, they're currently awaiting word. I think they've thrown in their application there. So, so eagerly awaiting that. Childcare board meeting, really quickly, some stats. There's eighty-four kids, eighty-four kids on the waitlist. There's eighty enrolled, twenty-one part-time, fifty-nine full-time, sorry, full-time, two drop-ins, thirty-nine Drayton Valley kids, forty-one Brazu kids. Received a couple of grants from Canada Post and Synovus. Those are always welcome. Really quickly with the government of Alberta, Minister Matt Jones, he's taken over the negotiations with the federal government regarding the ten-dollar day daycare and the administration of it. His background is, is finance, so it's more in his wheelhouse. But he's also working closely with Minister Nate Glubish to develop the technology to make sure that that system and program is easily dispatched. So tended portion of the Minister Turtin visit as well. He gave us kind of what his ministry does and kind of what his new mandate is. Pamina physician recruitment, a couple of things they're working on. March seventh, there's going to be a skills day where they bring high school students into the hospital. There's twenty-four Drayton kids, four Buck Lake kids signed up and they're expecting more from Breton and potentially, and with Salivan. Capacity's forty-two, so they're hoping to get forty-two, but they may not get there. I'll also be attending and I'll do the closing remarks on behalf of council there. So that's a good little program. There's an appreciation dinner on April seventeenth for physicians and medical, those in the medical field, I guess. So that'll be a good evening and they're currently planning that. And that's all I have. So that's it for council reports. Would somebody like to make a motion to accept department and council reports? Thank you, Counselor.
Make that motion?
All in favor? That is carried. Council items, do we have any roundtable discussion, anything to bring up? Anything top of mind for everybody on council? Nope. Okay, that's good. Moving along to Wally, did you want to talk about project status reports or is that only there for information?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the reports are there. If there are any questions from council on them, we're, we're happy to try to answer them. But they're there for information.
So any questions from anybody on the project status reports?
I don't have any questions, but I, I thought the, the opportunity to go through them was, was very good. I, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good way to stay caught up and quick and easy and understood. So well done.
I will just provide a, a comment on, on, on some of the, as we're reporting on the monthly. And we're happy to do that for, for this year. Sometimes you won't see a change, in particular this time of the year, right? So as construction season starts, you'll, you'll see them change quite a bit more.
Thank you. And then the rest here, I believe, are also information items. So would somebody like to make a motion to accept the information items as such? Thank you. All in favor? That is carried. So we will move into closed session, FOIP section twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So we will move into closed session, FOIP section twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine. Can somebody make a motion to move us in there? Thank you. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you.
You will play it here now.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
All right, so we can get going. I think we have Kundi right out of the gate here.
Yeah, no, thanks Wally. So for the sake of openness, we just thought to provide a report on the Clean Energy Improvement Program. So this program is something we, the town of Drayton Valley started some time back. And so I have here Marilyn, who just recently is the lead on the project and who can help us, you know, answer a few questions if there any. And so I guess just to start from the beginning.
We could.
Okay, yeah, awesome. So I think just to start things off from the beginning. So the Clean Energy Improvement Program offers low interest, long term financing to residential and commercial property owners for energy efficiency and renewable energy upgrades, which is then repaid via property taxes. Repayment is facilitated through an added charge, which can be called the SIP tax to the participants' regular property tax bill, which can be similar to a local improvement charge. So if a property is old, the SIP tax can either be paid out in full at the time of sale or transferred to the next property owner who resumes the scheduled payments. And so also thought just to include a brief timeline dating all the way back to September fifteen, twenty twenty one, which was when the SIP tax bylaw was passed. Then moving forward to May twenty twenty two, to when the town had applied for a three point two million dollar line of credit and covering the full cost of residential and commercial improvements. So our thinking is when this action was taken back in May twenty twenty two, that it was done with the idea that it would cover the entire cost, right? And as we fast forward during that same year, in August twenty twenty two, an application was submitted to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities for a combined loan and grant to provide funding to cover the project costs for the residential stream of the program for the next four years. So the FCM contribution would cover eighty percent of the total cost and all admin costs of the residential program. So I think that thing to note here is the fact in applying for the FCM fund, that it was only now designated to the residential stream. And so the non-residential stream is not a factor to consider. And I also just wanted to note that in that same year, the energy coordinator, you know, subsequently left the town and that position was never filled. And so given that being the case, next year, January, we were approved for the funding, which was great. And being approved for the funding, this would mean we would then cover the twenty percent, right? And the FCM grant and loan would cover the eighty percent. And so, so in being approved, what basically happened is that we signed the agreement in June, that same year of last year. And, and being that the case, we then contracted out that service for someone to basically, because in being approved for the grant through FCM, there are quite a few documents that they require and as well, there are some requirements for us to work with AB municipalities. And so being that the case that there was so much work to do, the town decided to contract this work out to someone, right? To sort of deliver on those deliverables. And so quite recently of, you know, so January this year, the contract was then terminated with the person we contacted out as they were not able to move the program forward or provide any documents required from their contract with the town, AB municipalities or FCM. The one thing to note is that, you know, combined with all of this, the contractor was expected to launch the program by this year, January first, twenty twenty four, which just didn't happen. And so that was another cause just to terminate their contract. So as a current status for this program, we now have three years remaining for this program. And with an option to apply for an extension in June twenty twenty seven. And so if we wish to continue the program past that extension, the town would then have to fully finance the program. And of course, something we just thought of is that in the current state would only then just be restricted to the residential projects. Also, there are still a number of deliverables required to AB municipalities and FCM in fully deploying this project. And so I did attach this little checklist and it's just a list of documents that are still required. And so it does highlight the information that has been received and other information that has not been received. And so in us basically going through some, you know, doing some research on what had actually been completed in this project. That's when we did notice that a lot of the stuff hadn't been done yet. And, and so that's just something to note for things that would still need to be done within this current state that we're in. So as it pertains to the financial implications, you know, for the town, we would be required to pay off all the blended interest rates. And so blended interest rates basically meaning that through the FCM loan, which we were approved for, there are interest charges for that. And as well, the interest charges for the line of credit that we took out. And so would that basically have to pay off those interest rates on the loans that we do give out to people that are interested in participating in this program? And that's how we would basically recover our costs. And so for the line of credit, we did take out three hundred and sixty one thousand, one hundred and twenty. And so when it comes to the legal and risk implementations, implications, the only thing that we did note was that in moving forward this program, there would be a ton of Drayton Valley program terms and conditions that we would have to sign. There's a master program agreement as well. There's a clean energy improvement agreement and lastly, a project agreement. And so with all of these, these are things that we've yet to do and yet things that we've yet to sign. And so when we do move along with it, these are things that we just, just have to consider. When it comes to organizational implications, I think the only thing to consider is the fact that if we do proceed, we will be designated as a community under the Clean Energy Improvement Program. And as it pertains to service level implications, I did provide another attachment. And so this was something AB municipalities was kind enough to send to us. It's some of the estimated admin time that they saw themselves when just running the program for a year. And so they were able to catch up, capture that information and provide, you know, a bit of details on how this would implicate, you know, the CIO, to the finance manager, the SIP lead, the tax clerk, the legal, marketing and communications. I think in total, four years, around two hundred and twenty three hours. And, you know, which I guess nine point three days just in full. So moving on, there is for the stakeholder and communication strategy part. So if deployed, we would collaborate with AB municipalities to develop and update the marketing and communications plan and ensure a marketing and communication strategy and tactics that tailored to the community. For next steps, that's yet to be determined. I guess that's the reason why we're having this meeting today, to sort of see what council thinks. As it comes, on our end, we do want, you know, council to endorse this adoption of the Clean Energy Improvement Program to be launched in June twenty fourth of this year as defined in Report AIR two four zero four six. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Kundi? Go ahead, Amela.
Thank you. So just from my understanding, the previous service provider, we terminated the contract. And so now, sorry, I missed that part. Do, do we have a new service provider or we're going to do it in-house?
So through the chair to councillor Gomana, so we'll do this in-house. And so the plan was, you know, for Marilyn to be the lead on this. And with, yeah, so without terminating the contract, we'll just move forward, working with Wally and Finance Department as well.
Because if I may, the second question is about the interest rates and financing. So, you know, at that time, I believe, you know, the financial implication of three hundred thousand was considered okay, but now we have a little bit of a different landscape of our budget. So I think as a council, we need to probably have that discussion whether we can allocate that much amount of money coming twenty twenty four budget cycle.
Yeah, right.
True, true. But we've just approved another one point six million credit line as well as another three point something for the, for the road.
Oh, you're, you're talking to venture, right? But I think this is actually a line of credit, correct? Different than the venture. So, but I, but I think what I heard you say was that we're going to look at a cost recovery. So any of that, any of that interest will be rolled into whatever is paid back to the town. So it'll be kind of net zero, net zero.
Yes, exactly. The way that the program will run is that for any residents that want to partake in the program, we would then look at the interest payments that we would make on the line of credit and as well on the loan that we receive from FCM. And then just have them cover both of those costs so we can pay off our line of credit.
Right, okay. And then the would be whenever we use that, we will be paying interest on that portion only, right? Whatever the, the portion, you know, I don't know if the community will sign up how much of interest there will be or if, if there's a big interest, then we would be using that line of credit more, right? And if it is not, then we will be using less of line of credit, right? Is that kind of the, how the system's set up?
So I do know that we will determine a fixed number of applications for the first year, is what I believe. And so that's one way for us to sort of limit, you know, how much we take out from the line of credit and how much to forecast and paying back. So we'll definitely have a number on saying, you know, we'll only approve fourteen applications this year. And then just work with that number and see what happens the next year and moving forward.
Okay, okay. And then we hopefully think that we can sign up fourteen committee members too for the program for the first year.
Yeah, so that number was just an example.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
But yeah.
Just whatever the number that we.
What number, whatever number it is, would look to getting those applicants and then making sure we can, you know, do what we can on our end and paying back that line of credit.
Thank you.
Can you tell me what's covered under this or give me an example of what somebody might want to do, like I'm assuming solar panels? So they'd install solar panels. We'd pay for it and they would pay it back through their taxes, covering the interest that we incur. Is that more or less it?
Exactly.
Okay, is there anything in addition to solar panels? I'm assuming, sorry, there's got to be some list somewhere of this is what qualifies? Like does a new furnace or new windows or stuff like that qualify? I'm, I'm just trying to get a handle on what exactly we're offering people.
Yeah, certainly. So there will be a list, which we would definitely share, you know, with every, every resident to basically show them what they can apply for and enhancing. And even just apart from that, we would then also try to work to create a vendor list. You know, so a list of vendors here within Drayton Valley to help those people. So there will be a predetermined list of vendors to help them make those upgrades. And so, yeah, so this will very much be through what we think makes sense and as well with what AB municipalities will allow.
Is there, is there a requirement for an assessment or anything like that? Or can, can homeowners just decide they want to pull the trigger on something and, and go ahead with it?
So I do know, like within the bylaw that was passed in twenty twenty one, that it is, it is, sets out for any person that applies for it. Think if I just, you know, take your attention to page. Yeah, you know, so with the three point four, like there is a list of, you know, you basically would have to be, you know, not in debt, not bankrupt or not going through bankruptcy. And so there is a list of, you know, criteria that we would have in place in making sure that we can filter out and make sure that the people that do apply for the program do have the means and ability to actually pay back and whatnot.
Comment if I may. We'd been in the Sustainability Committee looking at at our utility bills and how we can get information announcements onto those things. And even we, we talked about and we're seeing if it's doable, but attaching an additional page to them, just sort of a announcement page or something like that. I, I just think it's, we've got a, we've got a, a line into many of our residents through emailing our utility bills. And I, I, I just think it's a, it's a good opportunity, if possible, to get additional information to them. And this is something that I think we need to get. If we're going to pursue it, we need to get the word out there. And because I, I don't know about you folks, but I had no idea this was in place or available. Just like I didn't know we would reimburse people for, or take money off their utility bills if they bought a, an efficient toilet, different fixtures in their houses. So again, this is just a comment that I, I, I think if we can make that happen, and I don't know what the, what the deal is exactly with our system. But if, I, I think if we could attach another, another page to that utility bill, even a, you know, we I might call it a newsletter, but just important information, I think we'd get it in front of people. They'd, they'd take it for consideration, so. Kurt, I, I just think this, it's an ideal opportunity to get some of what we feel is important information. Without costs as much at all. The second page. So for me, thanks.
You go ahead, I already had the chancellor.
I remember this all sort of occurring and being quite excited about it. And then for some reason, it, it just took this drift, it seems to me, and I so I'm, I'm here today thinking, what makes me excited about this right now? Like what, what would create that sort of get it out on the news? I'm, I'm really curious, like five percent. I'm, I'm really curious, like, five percent loan, something. I, I, I just don't know what would make me as a homeowner, because we, it's no longer, um, for industrial, it's only home, home occupation. But i- is it just the five percent loan that, that, that's the exciting part?
Unless you have something else to add, sir?
Yeah, I think I'll just, in addition. Yeah, I think the other really cool part in talking with other people through this program is the fact that we will try to make it localized when it comes to the vendors. So it's a, it's a great, you know, uh, push for businesses that do provide these services and just talking to them. So they can be in that pre-approved list. So it could really generate, you know, a bit of business for, you know, depending on the demand that we get from residents, for, you know, some of our local businesses, right? And so that, I think that's pretty exciting, but.
Can you do the work? Sorry, do you have a question to me?
No, go ahead. Uh, I would, probably the same kind of question, but yeah, go ahead.
So, uh, yeah, I think the whole reason of the pre-approved vendor list is that only the vendors who do the work.
Yeah. Get to the vendor list, see? So, yeah, I was just thinking the same way as councillor Maggie, you know, at, at, in twenty twenty-two, it was very exciting. And, you know, we heard about this and, um, uh, on, um, AM, um, Alberta municipalities, there was presentations that the gentleman was there. And, uh, I visited couple of, uh, trade shows and he was there promoting as well, the, the one that we let go, right? So, but then, uh, I started hearing about some complications of administrating the program. Um, do you know, Kundi, if any other municipality successfully administering this program, uh, that, you know, we can, we can get some idea from them that what, what were the challenges? What were the positives that they, uh, went through? Um, the, the other piece that I'm concerned about is, uh, doing it internally. I'm hearing that our staff is at capacity or we don't have, is anything else that we can take on. I think, um, you know, for staff, productivity-wise, there's other important things that we may be able to achieve than, than this with, especially with economic development, uh, side of things, right? So that's the other concern I have. But as, as a program, that's fantastic program, the, the logic, the idea, I, I really like.
No, thank you for that comment. Um, so A B municipalities has been a really great resource for us in providing information on, on how other municipalities are going through it. You know, one municipality that has been suggested for us to speak to is, um, Rocky Mountain House. I do know they have that program. And, uh, they're very comparable to us, even in size. And so honestly, like, when it comes to, uh, just reaching out and just getting a bit of feedback on how other municipalities are dealing with it, uh, you know, working through A B municipalities, you know, will definitely help us and even reaching out individually, uh, you know, will help us a lot. So I do agree with that comment for sure. Uh, and we will definitely do that due diligence, right? Just making sure we can do it in a, in the same way, not go through the same hurdles that someone else might have gone through, right? Uh, and so far, other comment about, um, staff capacity, this was actually something we discussed internally in trying to decide, uh, you know, if we do have the capacity. So, you know, in talking, you know, to overall Wally and even with us as a department, we did realize that, um, you know, with such a program like this, that could have this great benefit. And that, um, you know, it is something important for us to look into. Um, I know in talking to over, they are hiring, I think, a finance intern. And, uh, so we did discuss, you know, the possibility of having that intern work with us. Currently, we thought, you know, Maryland would help just lead the project in-house and just seeing how far that goes and, uh, just, you know, creating that capacity so that we can actually have this done, just given how, like, important we think it would be. And, uh, so we did push the date back to, um, June twenty-four, just to allow us enough time to get organized. And part of the process to launching this program would be for us to have, you know, project charter in place, standard operating procedures as well. So, and, uh, we'll know for sure what we're getting into. And again, with the attachment that we provided on, you know, what other municipalities, how much time they've been spending on it. You know, in looking through it, we sort of realized that, you know, it's, uh, it's really not too much time when you have the system in place. And so on, on our end right now, working from now until June, it'll be about just creating a system. And then hopefully, you know, um, we would have these month of hours designated where it would just be two hundred and twenty-four, three hours within a year, right? Which I think accounts just to nine days, really, within a year of time towards this project. So I think capacity won't be too much of an issue.
It is, it is valid.
Okay, I had a, I had a couple of questions. One, um, just back to Emila's point there, the, the line of credit. We're not paying interest on that unless we use it, correct? Or are we paying interest on that? Even if we don't use it?
So my understanding is, so for the line of credits, that was approved, uh, when the bylaw was passed. And so, um, when we do start running the program, uh, we would then, 'cause right now we're just in a position where, um, FCM and A B municipalities just wants us to make a decision on whether or not we're moving forward. And so for that line of credit, I do believe that once we do make that decision, that's when we'd then have to make, you know, payments towards it, once we start using the program.
Okay. Um, and then the other thing was just, I'm, I'm thinking just on a risk side from the town's perspective. Let's say, let's say somebody goes and spends twenty-five thousand dollars on new windows. Um, and they stop paying their mortgage and the mortgage goes back to the bank, or the house goes back to the bank. Is there any risk to the town, I guess? Um, you know, like, i- is that registered on title? You know, like, you would see sort of, uh, tax arrears or anything like that? Is this registered on the title saying there is this, um, you know, sitting with this particular property? I would assume so. And I guess if that's the case, who does that? Is that somebody from the town who registers that on title? Um, and then secondly, you know, if, if, if the bank does own that place and this is sitting there, who's, who's making those payments? And are we guaranteed that money back?
Yeah, no, the, no, th- those are great questions. So the bylaw does, uh, cover a bit. So when it comes to this being registered on title, I do know that the way that this program will work is that, um, any resident that uses the program, uh, for the fee that they would have to pay, that would be levied on their taxes, right? And so in that way, it would be an assurance from us that, you know, out of whatever they're paying for the property taxes, there'll be this sub-tax added on top of that. And, uh, but if it's registered on title, I guess it's something to look into.
Yeah, and that's the reason I ask, 'cause if that's the case, then that's fine. Like, we would get paid before the banks and then that's, that's beneficial.
Well, it would just be an outstanding task, Bill.
Yeah, like, so if somebody's in arrears on their, on their taxes right now, um, it's registered on title to say, tax arrears municipality of town of Drayton Valley. Um, I'm just thinking that's probably the best way to administer this. So it's A, known by any buyer, right?
Yeah.
That this tax is on there and then B, um, you know, that it's outstanding, right? Um, and that there's record of it somewhere in a transaction when a lawyer looks at the, at the title that, oh, this needs to be paid out or whatever, right? Yeah.
Because it, it could be a significant.
Yes, and that's kind of, like, if it's fifty grand, it's like, it's a lot of money. As a realtor, you're only as good as the information you're given, right? Um, but I, I would, I would suggest that this should be registered on title just because it is a, it's there and it's outstanding, right? Um, and that's, it's almost like effectively a lien, right? Is what it would be on the property in place of the funds that are, that are, uh, loaned, right? Yeah.
Could you, um, could you please?
Yeah, and, yeah.
Who built two? Or Balazin? Could, you know, like, I just imagine if you went and said, okay, you got five percent, and I'm gonna do all things that are fit into this thing. Could you do that? Would that be a good thing?
Yeah, new builds or retrofits, I guess is the question.
Because it would, it would make sense if you could, you know, and get it onto your mortgage and reduce that by whatever the number is. I think that's accelerated or fund that I brought up last. Meaning that it's, it's, it has additional options or funding for green initiatives. You got more funding. Again, it's closed right now. It's a moot point. I know that didn't. That was all for new construction. Forced housing. You have the accelerator, whatever.
Otherwise, yeah, I think it's a good program. I think we should, I think we should pursue it, my opinion, but, uh, um, yeah, I guess it depends, like, if, if we get two people that wanna do it and, you know, the, to the tune of, let's say, ten grand or twenty grand, is it worth it for us to, to continue it on kind of thing, right? It'd be my question is, so, yeah, I guess it just, I guess wait, wait to see what, uh, what the uptake is.
I'm a little concerned about waiting till April. That's, uh, you know, it's almost a month away. Uh, uh, we need his team to have, you know, some work to do, right? Get this phone, so it will shorten that up by.
Um, I guess how, how quick does, uh, Alberta MUNIS and FCM need to know?
The way it's laid out right now.
Right. Yeah, can we, can we conditionally approve this with feedback on that particular piece? So that doesn't stop you from proceeding. You know, proceed, but, you know, let's, let's understand that piece before, like, actually administering the program, I think, is what I would view it.
Well, I don't think this may be approved, but I can defer it, as we talked about.
Yeah.
What I'm hearing is, it's ours, can we go ahead? So start planning process to do that and then get into, we'll be in the head stuff, bringing back the form.
Yeah. Does that work for everybody?
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay proceeding too. Like, it doesn't matter. I think, um, I think I, I, I would assume that this has already been thought about. I think it's just understanding, just help us understand the mechanics. I'm, I'm sure it's there, so.
So could you open up this? Sure.
Let's do that.
Approving it?
I'm okay to appro- to approve it myself.
Oh, I'm good with approval.
That's what we'll do then.
Always, it turns out that this is a real issue. Always make a decision. Pull it off here. But we still have the offer. Totally committed.
Here we will come out of close at uh, 12:55 PM. Do we have to go all in favor?
Yeah, all in favor?
No, we're in closed, into perpetuity. Why, why, Rick? That's why.
Make the motion. Thank you, Mayor Clark.
Not a question, but just a concern, you know, as, as we discussed, I just have, have those concerns. Um, one being the information not there for being on the title. Or how do we make sure that um, we, we as a town covered um, on um, financials? Um, also do a little bit of a due diligence um, on how the other communities are handling that so far. And also I have a, a concern about the uh, staff time allocation as well as whether this is the priority for me, for, for our staff time. Especially the economy development staff um, doing something like this. So that's, those are my concerns.
Any other questions, comments or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? I think that is carried. And that's it, I believe, so we will adjourn the meeting at 12:58.